Okay, approval of the agenda. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, citizen comments. Is there anybody from the crowd that would like to speak for three minutes? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Jim Maligan. I live at 1217 North Lake Edge. Thank you guys for letting me talk today. I, earlier this summer, I had the chance to go to a presentation next door where they talked about kind of the potential design features of a potential new community center slash library. It was very exciting to hear about. I know if and when it happens will be in the future, but just wanted to say from one citizen's point of view, I think it's great. Goddard's a growing community and the things they talked about potentially putting in the building along with the library was really encouraging. As the, as it hopefully moves forward, I would encourage you guys to go big. Like I said, I think, I think Goddard's got a bright future and it'd be a chance to really show everybody we were here and in my opinion, I think the goal should be in five years from now, if another community's wanting to build something like, like that, that they're, that they're looking at Goddard's as a, as a place to do that, as a, as a model. I think that the architect is a, is a local architect, which is, which is really encouraging. I hope when it does come out that it's, it's, it's something that, that everybody can be happy with. And other than that, I, I think today, I don't know if that works, but I saw today like the public comment for the, the, the budget, something like that, but, or the, what do you call it? The middle levy. And I just wanted to say that I think the middle levy should, it's good. I mean, we're a community, it takes, as the community grows, you gotta have more money to, to pay for all the things we need, so I think it's, it's great that we're gonna collect more this year than last year. That's it.
Jim, thank you for talking.
Thank you.
Did you think that the conversations were engaging? Do you think McCondon Gordon was cooperative with everybody?
McCondon Gordon wasn't there. SVT was.
Oh, SVT?
Yeah, the, the architect.
Oh, okay.
But, since you brought him up, I, I will say, I, I do hope that if this does move forward, you guys would work with a more of a local contractor. McCondon Gordon does have a local office, but so does Walmart, and they're not, they're not local either, so would hope. There's a lot of local contractors based out of Wichita, and I think they'd all be happy to work with you and provide budgets and stuff.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else? No one? Okay, moving on. Item F, consent agenda. You guys take a look at count A.
Just make note that the large one I covered 25th, most of that was our bond principal payments that we do, second half of the year.
All motion approved. Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item B1.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item G1, which is about 101 North Cedar Street, update and discussion. So, a quick background, which actually kind of a lengthy background, to be quite honest, is on November 11th, 2020, the Code Enforcement Officer, me and myself, did preliminary investigations of property located at 101 North Cedar Street was found to be in violation of City Honor Code under Chapter 4, Art. 7 for intent habitation. Certified letter Western to property owner, allowing 30 days to last to begin the process of bringing the property up to standards for livability. Property owner did some beginning work to the yard, but failed to bring any overall improvements to the property itself. Resolution was signed 21-04 to schedule a public hearing from March 15th, 2021. On that day, Mr. Kimpel, the property owner, revealed he was going to sign over the property to Mr. Jason Griswold. Mr. Griswold would help bring the property up to date, but finances provided by Mr. Kimpel. During the conversation, Mr. Griswold has revealed that Mr. Kimpel did not intend to pay for the rehabilitation of the property. Mr. Griswold has backed that deal, finding it unfavorable. Recent review of the property records showed there had been no transfer of ownership. There's still an ownership of Mr. Kimpel. Continuation of the background, on April 29th, the Code Enforcement Officer and the Central County Building Inspector did another review of the property to assess the requirements for code compliance from a building perspective. On May 3rd, the governing body was updated on the status of the property, expressed a desire to reconsider condemnation. May 17th, the City Council and the mayor signed Resolution 21-22, scheduling a public hearing for July 6th. On July 6th, Resolution 21-03 assigned authorizing condemnation of property required, a golden permit to be pulled, two weeks and demolition to be finished within 60 days. On July 19th, Chris Cole spoke before the City Council of his desire for the property and hopes of acquiring a land for new business location. August 16th, Ward Hilliard spoke of his desire for the property in order of keeping it residential, possibly building a new residential structure. Analysis for today, the City Council is considering the following. This is the move forward of demolition by bid option, awarding bid for demolition to Pierce and Construction, allowing Ward Hilliard to proceed and consider the matter resolved to be handled through the permitting process or to table for a future date. So those are the three options that have been presented. There is a transfer of ownership to Mr. Hilliard on 8/23/2021 per Document 30093494. This is conferred by Central County Clerk's Office. An application for demolition has been submitted under Farha Home Trends on behalf of Mr. Hilliard. 101 North Cedar Street is a single-family detached home. So these are the pictures, and you've seen these ones before, they're in previous agenda packets. Financially, none and niggly approved as the form. Recommendation is recommended City Council consider the three options and choose the one that most deemed appropriate in the eyes of the City Council.
So Kimpel doesn't know?
There has been transfer of ownership to Mr. Ward Hilliard.
He filed for demolition.
And he did file for an application for demolition. The only reason it wasn't immediately processed because the transfer of ownership hadn't taken place yet. But the transfer of ownership has taken place, and so we have allowed him to move forward with the demolition. They just haven't paid for it yet. It said, Mr. Jeremy Farha, Farha Home Trends, did say it would take about a week to two weeks to rally everything to demolish that property, but they did dump dirt on the site today to be in preparation for backfill.
They shut the gas off, too?
They shut the gas off. Evergy has removed the meter. The gas has been capped, the water's been capped, and the sewer's been capped, from what I understand. Is that correct?
If we moved forward with the option A, then we would have to put a lien on the property.
Correct.
Then we're putting a lien on Mr. Hilliard.
Correct.
Has already probably made some type of good phase payment to Farha, I would assume, if they're bringing in filter.
I'm assuming there might have been a deposit, but I can't say.
When did Far, when did Farha say that they find out?
Next two weeks. Week at the minimum, two weeks maximum.
I wouldn't be opposed to letting them do that. I would also want to put a date on there that needs to be done by, if it's done by that 30 days, already rolled.
Okay. I agree, I agree with Larry.
Did we say in two weeks, or did we say?
Yeah.
First meeting of October?
If you would like, we could say, we could choose option number two, allow Ward Hilliard to proceed and consider the matter resolved to be handled through the permitting process by, and we just amended to say allow Ward Hilliard to proceed contingent upon a follow-up for the first meeting in October.
That's a little weird.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
He's aware that if it isn't done by that 30 days, will somebody help him?
We'll bring that to his attention.
I think, I think we can go with that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Item H1, Arbor Creek Addition Space to Stormwater Sewer and Water.
Honorable Mayor and Council, as was just stated, this is for Phase 2 Arbor Creek, bid award for sewer water and, I believe that's it. Though background, the City Council adopted petitions and resolutions for improvement to Phase 2 of the Arbor Creek Addition on June 21st, 2021. The petitions and resolutions authorize improvements to construct Phase 2 sanitary sewer, stormwater paving, and water infrastructure in accordance with the authorization resolution approved by the City Council on that date, Resolution 2128 through 2131. The total issuance, including capitalized interest and issuance fees, is $882,000. At the July 19, 2021, meeting, the governing body unanimously adopted Resolution 2135, Exhibition H1B, authorizing issuance and delivery of the GOB temporary notes, or General Obligation Correct Temporary Notes, Series 2021-3, and the principal amount of $930,000, excuse me, to finance the improvements. Wow. And here's, and the analysis. Bids were advertised and solicited for Thursday, September 2nd, 21. Here at City Hall, we received five bids. Of the five bids, NOAH's construction is the best bid with a total cost of $236,533.50. NOAH's bid is itemized as followed. Stormwater, $91,003.1150. Sanitary, $61.645. Water distribution, $83.577. The next best bid is $24,555 and 50 cents more expensive, and total $261,089. The construction agreement conforms with previous agreements for Phase 1 improvements and includes a substantial completion date, 40 days for the, after the notice procedure is issued. The contract amount is $236,533.50. And I've already stated the itemizations on there in the last minute ago. And as stated before, the next best bid was $24,555 more expensive. The contract includes a two-year maintenance of improvements, essentially a warranty for the materials, parts, and craftsmanship from project completion. There is a $236,533.50 statutory performance and maintenance bond. Disagreements will be settled through litigation. The city engineer is a primary city representative for the project. His little map here kind of shows the area of Phase 2, as you can remember from prior council meetings, includes water and sewer through here and these streets, and a brief extension here at the south. These are, this is where the sewer improvements will, will occur. And stormwater. Financials, these improvements are financed and administered in accordance with a special assessment process, KSA 12-6A01. The improvements are to be financed 100% by the Improvement District. The developer owns 100% of the Improvement District and is the sole petitioner. The issuance complies with Rule G32 of the Municipal Security Rulemaking Board. Lately, it is approved as the form. Before we make a recommendation, are there any questions?
I don't think that's already built out in Phase 1.
Can you answer whether it's in on Phase 1 as far as houses or if tops are?
We're about 39, 39 houses built out of.
And out of what's the total?
Fifty.
Fifty-two?
These numbers start to.
Two or four.
It's over 50. It's around 50, I would say.
But they're going up pretty quick over there. This is a small phase, and as quickly as they're selling lots, I wouldn't be surprised if they had already these, they were already ready to sell.
We've got the homes being touched by the last.
Recommendation and actions, it is recommended that the council, one, declare NOAH Construction Company Inc. as the best bid and award the bid to NOAH Construction to construct the Arbor Creek Addition Phase 2 Stormwater, Sanitary Sewer, and Water Distribution Improvements, that is to be a voice vote. And the second is to authorize the mayor to execute the construction agreement with NOAH Construction Company Inc. for the construction of Arbor Creek Addition Phase 2 Stormwater, Sanitary Sewer, and Water Distribution Improvements, which is also a voice vote.
Our motion to accept is, to approve is presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then Terry, do we need a second as well on item two?
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Right in two, I motion to accept it as presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then Terry, do we need a second as well on item two?
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Right in two, I motion to accept it as presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then Terry, do we need a second as well on item two?
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Right in two, I motion to accept it as presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then Terry, do we need a second as well on item two?
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Right in two, I motion to accept it as presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item D1.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item G1, which is about 101 North Cedar Street, update and discussion. So, a quick background, which actually kind of a lengthy background, to be quite honest, is on November 11th, 2020, the Code Enforcement Officer, me and myself, did preliminary investigations of property located at 101 North Cedar Street was found to be in violation of City Honor Code under Chapter 4, Art. 7 for intent habitation. Certified letter Western to property owner, allowing 30 days to last to begin the process of bringing the property up to standards for livability. Property owner did some beginning work to the yard, but failed to bring any overall improvements to the property itself. Resolution was signed 21-04 to schedule a public hearing from March 15th, 2021. On that day, Mr. Kimpel, the property owner, revealed he was going to sign over the property to Mr. Jason Griswold. Mr. Griswold would help bring the property up to date, but finances provided by Mr. Kimpel. During the conversation, Mr. Griswold has revealed that Mr. Kimpel did not intend to pay for the rehabilitation of the property. Mr. Griswold has backed that deal, finding it unfavorable. Recent review of the property records showed there had been no transfer of ownership. There's still an ownership of Mr. Kimpel. Continuation of the background, on April 29th, the Code Enforcement Officer and the Central County Building Inspector did another review of the property to assess the requirements for code compliance from a building perspective. On May 3rd, the governing body was updated on the status of the property, expressed a desire to reconsider condemnation. May 17th, the City Council and the mayor signed Resolution 21-22, scheduling a public hearing for July 6th. On July 6th, Resolution 21-03 assigned authorizing condemnation of property required, a golden permit to be pulled, two weeks and demolition to be finished within 60 days. On July 19th, Chris Cole spoke before the City Council of his desire for the property and hopes of acquiring a land for new business location. August 16th, Ward Hilliard spoke of his desire for the property in order of keeping it residential, possibly building a new residential structure. Analysis for today, the City Council is considering the following. This is the move forward of demolition by bid option, awarding bid for demolition to Pierce and Construction, allowing Ward Hilliard to proceed and consider the matter resolved to be handled through the permitting process or to table for a future date. So those are the three options that have been presented. There is a transfer of ownership to Mr. Hilliard on 8/23/2021 per Document 30093494. This is conferred by Central County Clerk's Office. An application for demolition has been submitted under Farha Home Trends on behalf of Mr. Hilliard. 101 North Cedar Street is a single-family detached home. So these are the pictures, and you've seen these ones before, they're in previous agenda packets. Financially, none and niggly approved as the form. Recommendation is recommended City Council consider the three options and choose the one that most deemed appropriate in the eyes of the City Council.
So Kimpel doesn't know?
There has been transfer of ownership to Mr. Ward Hilliard.
He filed for demolition.
And he did file for an application for demolition. The only reason it wasn't immediately processed because the transfer of ownership hadn't taken place yet. But the transfer of ownership has taken place, and so we have allowed him to move forward with the demolition. They just haven't paid for it yet. It said, Mr. Jeremy Farha, Farha Home Trends, did say it would take about a week to two weeks to rally everything to demolish that property, but they did dump dirt on the site today to be in preparation for backfill.
They shut the gas off, too?
They shut the gas off. Evergy has removed the meter. The gas has been capped, the water's been capped, and the sewer's been capped, from what I understand. Is that correct?
If we moved forward with the option A, then we would have to put a lien on the property.
Correct.
Then we're putting a lien on Mr. Hilliard.
Correct.
Has already probably made some type of good phase payment to Farha, I would assume, if they're bringing in filter.
I'm assuming there might have been a deposit, but I can't say.
When did Far, when did Farha say that they find out?
Next two weeks. Week at the minimum, two weeks maximum.
I wouldn't be opposed to letting them do that. I would also want to put a date on there that needs to be done by, if it's done by that 30 days, already rolled.
Okay. I agree, I agree with Larry.
Did we say in two weeks, or did we say?
Yeah.
The first meeting of October?
If you would like, we could say, we could choose option number two, allow Ward Hilliard to proceed and consider the matter resolved to be handled through the permitting process by, and we just amended to say allow Ward Hilliard to proceed contingent upon a follow-up for the first meeting in October.
That's a little weird.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
He's aware that if it isn't done by that 30 days, will somebody help him?
We'll bring that to his attention.
Yeah. I think, I think we can go with that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Item H1, Arbor Creek Addition Space to Stormwater Sewer and Water.
Honorable Mayor and Council, as was just stated, this is for Phase 2 Arbor Creek, bid award for sewer water and, I believe that's it. Though background, the City Council adopted petitions and resolutions for improvement to Phase 2 of the Arbor Creek Addition on June 21st, 2021. The petitions and resolutions authorize improvements to construct Phase 2 sanitary sewer, stormwater paving, and water infrastructure in accordance with the authorization resolution approved by the City Council on that date, Resolution 2128 through 2131. The total issuance, including capitalized interest and issuance fees, is $882,000. At the July 19, 2021, meeting, the governing body unanimously adopted Resolution 2135, Exhibition H1B, authorizing issuance and delivery of the GOB temporary notes, or General Obligation Correct Temporary Notes, Series 2021-3, and the principal amount of $930,000, excuse me, to finance the improvements. Wow. And here's, and the analysis. Bids were advertised and solicited for Thursday, September 2nd, 21. Here at City Hall, we received five bids. Of the five bids, NOAH's construction is the best bid with a total cost of $236,533.50. NOAH's bid is itemized as followed. Stormwater, $91,003.1150. Sanitary, $61.645. Water distribution, $83.577. The next best bid is $24,555 and 50 cents more expensive, and total $261,089. The construction agreement conforms with previous agreements for Phase 1 improvements and includes a substantial completion date, 40 days for the, after the notice procedure is issued. The contract amount is $236,533.50. And I've already stated the itemizations on there in the last minute ago. And as stated before, the next best bid was $24,555 more expensive. The contract includes a two-year maintenance of improvements, essentially a warranty for the materials, parts, and craftsmanship from project completion. There is a $236,533.50 statutory performance and maintenance bond. Disagreements will be settled through litigation. The city engineer is a primary city representative for the project. His little map here kind of shows the area of Phase 2, as you can remember from prior council meetings, includes water and sewer through here and these streets, and a brief extension here at the south. These are, this is where the sewer improvements will, will occur. And stormwater. Financials, these improvements are financed and administered in accordance with a special assessment process, KSA 12-6A01. The improvements are to be financed 100% by the Improvement District. The developer owns 100% of the Improvement District and is the sole petitioner. The issuance complies with Rule G32 of the Municipal Security Rulemaking Board. Lately, it is approved as the form. Before we make a recommendation, are there any questions?
I don't think that's already built out in Phase 1.
Can you answer whether it's in on Phase 1 as far as houses or if tops are?
We're about 39, 39 houses built out of.
And out of what's the total?
Fifty.
Fifty-two?
These numbers start to.
Two or four.
It's over 50. It's around 50, I would say.
But they're going up pretty quick over there. This is a small phase, and as quickly as they're selling lots, I wouldn't be surprised if they had already these, they were already ready to sell.
We've got the homes being touched by the last.
Recommendation and actions, it is recommended that the council, one, declare NOAH Construction Company Inc. as the best bid and award the bid to NOAH Construction to construct the Arbor Creek Addition Phase 2 Stormwater, Sanitary Sewer, and Water Distribution Improvements, that is to be a voice vote. And the second is to authorize the mayor to execute the construction agreement with NOAH Construction Company Inc. for the construction of Arbor Creek Addition Phase 2 Stormwater, Sanitary Sewer, and Water Distribution Improvements, which is also a voice vote.
Our motion to accept is, to approve is presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then Terry, do we need a second as well on item two?
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Right in two, I motion to accept it as presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then Terry, do we need a second as well on item two?
Yeah, let's go ahead and.
Right in two, I motion to accept it as presented.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Council?
Honorable governing body, so this is the consideration for replacement of a UPS device for the City Hall server room. So recently, our UPS, or uninterrupted power source device that powers our servers, was recently damaged beyond repair in a power surge at City Hall. The UPS provides power to the server, essentially all of our equipment that runs our computer system, for up to 15 minutes during a power outage, so that entire system is not resetting. And it kind of just avoids an entire shutdown of the system. So the device also powers the PD WatchGuard system, which Lance might know a little bit more about, but I believe it powers the vehicle cameras.
Well, that stores and facilitates the, the storage and viewing and everything about the video cameras on our body and in the cars.
So when there's downtime on that, you're relying on storage in the vehicles, right? It's quite a bit less.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's part of what it powers. So since this device powers the entire server, it needs to be able to have a little bit longer battery backup than a traditional UPS like is in our office. It might keep the power going to our computers for a minute. This keeps the server going for 15 minutes, so quite a bit longer. Here's a little bit what it looks like. It slides into our server rack. It's about twice the size of our, the typical UPS you would see in an office. So short of a larger-scale backup power source, this is the next affordable option that we really have and that Gilmore Solutions, our IT company, recommends. So they made the recommendation to go ahead and order and replace that unit in a timely manner to prevent any out, any further outages or downtime, especially on that WatchGuard system. So Gilmore will install, install that unit, ensure it is operating properly with limited downtime. The unit is ready to be ordered, and as soon as it comes in, they will go ahead and install it. We also have pretty frequent power outages, or at least surges, at City Hall, especially at night, it seems like, so this, this item comes in handy quite often. So the cost did come in at $5,366.45 for this project. That's with labor and installation. Go ahead and take any other questions if you have any, your comments.
Do we have a surge protector? Is there a bill?
I believe, yeah, I believe there's a surge protector, but I'm not an electrician or an IT specialist, really, so I believe that's like a flash.
That's basically what this is, is a surge protector for the server and the other, you know, equipment that's in that rack, basically.
So if the power surge is off, flashes off real quick, I think, I think we're all right, like it would, a regular-sized unit would probably cover that, but if the power goes off from five to 15 minutes, it essentially shuts our entire system down.
You make surge protectors, you put on your box to where you get a big surge, it absorbs it, so that it doesn't hit the rest of the system.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's basically what this is.
But it was.
But it's for, it's for the system, not for an individual.
But it fried this one, so.
Yeah, this is.
I'm just, I'm just saying, should we put something in our box before this?
And I don't think there's a 100% way to know that we fried this. I think it's a pretty old unit.
Yeah, it's from, it's from like, sort of purchases ago. So it's, it's, I don't know, eight years old.
But we can double-check if there's a surge protector on the system. I think our decker would know that, or the electric company we use.
Well, and remember, too, well, this is a separate issue, but we are planning to, tentatively planning to use part of our CARESAC money for backup generators for all of our infrastructure, which would include City Hall. But yes, this, this device does act as a, I believe this, that device does act as a surge protector, but we'll, we'll get with Gilmore and see what else they recommend. But I was under the impression that this was going to cover that as well, but I don't know.
Shut down the system. So the device also powers the PD WatchGuard system, which Lance might know a little bit more about, but I believe it powers the vehicle cameras.
That stores and facilitates the storage and viewing and everything about the video cameras on our body and in the cars.
So when there's downtime on that, you're relying on storage in the vehicles, right? It's quite a bit less.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's part of what it powers. So since this device powers the entire server, it needs to be able to have a little bit longer battery backup than a traditional UPS like is in our office. It might keep the power going to our computers for a minute. This keeps the server going for 15 minutes, so quite a bit longer. Here's a little bit what it looks like. It slides into our server rack. It's about twice the size of our, the typical UPS you would see in an office. So short of a larger scale backup power source, this is the next affordable option that we really have and that Gilmore Solutions, our IT company, recommends. So they made the recommendation to go ahead and order and replace that unit in a timely manner to prevent any further outages or downtime, especially on that WatchGuard system. So Gilmore will install that unit, ensure it is operated properly with limited downtime. The unit is ready to be ordered and as soon as it comes in, they will go ahead and install it. We also have pretty frequent power outages, or at least surges, at City Hall, especially at night, it seems like. So this item comes in handy quite often. So the cost did come in at $5,366.45 for this project. That's with labor and installation. Go ahead and take any other questions if you have any your comments.
Do you have a surge protector?
I believe, yeah, I believe there's a surge protector, but I'm not an electrician or an IT specialist, really. So I believe that's like a flash.
That's basically what this is, is a surge protector for the server and the other, you know, equipment that's in that rack, basically.
So if the power surge is off, flashes off real quick, I think, I think we're all right. Like it would, a regular sized unit would probably cover that, but if the power goes out from five to 15 minutes, it essentially shuts our entire system down.
You make surge protectors, you put on your box to where you get a big surge, it absorbs it so that it doesn't hit the rest of the system.
Yeah, that's basically what this is.
But it was.
But it's for, it's for the system, not for an individual.
But it fried this one, so.
Yeah, this is.
I'm just saying, should we put something in our box before this?
And I don't think there's a 100% way to know that we fried this. I think it's a pretty old unit.
Yeah, it's from, it's from like several purchases ago. So it's, I don't know, eight years old.
We can double check if there's a surge protector on the system. I think our decker would know that or the electric company we use.
Well, and remember too, well, this is a separate issue, but we are planning to, tentatively planning to use part of our CARESAC money for backup generators for all of our infrastructure, including City Hall. But yes, this, this device does act as a, I believe this that device does act as a surge protector, but we'll, we'll get with Gilmore and see what else they recommend. But I was under the impression that this was going to cover that as well, but I don't know.
Can we proceed and then look if they need a protector or dual purpose?
Probably dual purpose. I believe it is.
I don't think they're that expensive. I mean, it's just matured.
Well, speaking of insurance, do we not have insurance that protects us from natural, like what kind of surge was it? Was it due to weather or, we don't know, we're just assuming a power surge happened.
I think that thing was blocked.
And I think it's a multitude of things that occurred. It's, it's in a room that unfortunately just gets hot because of what equipment is in there, which is a remedy that Thatcher is working on. We've put a fan in there temporarily. It was old. It was getting, collecting dust. I think it was just a multitude of things. It kind of came together that just allowed it to give up.
Larry, do you want to increase the budget slightly, that they need buy a protector?
If we.
They can?
Well, anything we're gonna, the only reason we brought this to you is because it's over Brian's $5,000 threshold.
Right.
So if we need anything else to go with it, it'll, it'll, it'll be, it'll be under that. So we'll be able to approve that at Brian's level. And also, this is kind of related, but Gilmore told us specifically that they have got supply chain issues and it's industry wide right now for all this electronic stuff that we get through them. So they're even having us, you know, put in orders now for our PC replacements for next year, just so they'll have a lead time to get them ready so they can deliver them next year. So.
And this isn't really, by the way, this isn't really per se a surge protector. It's an interruptible power source, so it, it keeps the power going. But I, I believe there's probably a circuit protector in the breaker box, but we'll check on that and come back to you if we need to on it. So.
Okay. A surge protector is basically protects the whole building.
Right.
Off the box.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that too. We could, we would probably, I believe, if I can get away with it, I'll do it with this, but we will probably include anything that's going to be infrastructure based for City Hall, for water and sewer system. We're going to be able to use CARESAC money for that. So.
All right. You need to vote on this?
Yeah, I just need to approve for that, that dollar amount there.
Make the motion to approve the $5,366.45 for the UPS system.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks, Thatcher. No problem. So next item is to consider a grass management plan for the park areas. So I know this has been brought up in the past few months or past year by a couple different council members, I believe. So the grass quality at Linear Park is just in poor condition. I've been here for a couple of years. It's kind of the worst I've seen it as far as weeds and dead spots and things of that nature. And that's kind of despite pretty good sprinkler coverage. So we're just hoping to consider going a little further. So along with the dead spots, another main issue is kind of just the inconsistencies in the types of grass. So I'll rely on Brooke here, but Brooke and I and some of the bidders and some of his employees have been out looking and seeing what's going on. So there's, if you see, there's a lot of spots of fescue kind of popping up through Bermuda grass and vice versa. Some of the worst grass areas as far as weeds and dead spots are surrounding the playground, pavilion and splash pad area. So kind of the most, the first areas you see when you're going to the park. There's also, I believe what Larry was mentioning earlier, a lot of gravel areas or gravel patches, old pavement patches throughout the park. There may, there may only be so much that can be done about that, but I know there's some smaller spots that could probably be cleaned up. So the recommendation by numerous companies, we sought out bids from, was to overseed with fescue before the winter and then kind of focus on weed management, fertilization before the end of the year. The treatments would be conducted around the times of the day, hopefully in the morning when the park's a little bit less busy, kids are at school and that way patrons won't be coming in contact with any fertilizer, potentially other spray chemicals. So here's kind of an example of some of the recent pictures we took. A lot of clover. Some of it's died off by now because of the heat, but I've seen a lot of clover this summer and then some of the other weeds sprouting up. Quite a few of these scattered throughout the park, especially kind of in that pavilion bathroom, kind of playground equipment triangle there. A lot of these dead spots or some of the gravel mixed in. But, you know, I believe some of these can, you know, you can peel some of that up and maybe add a little bit of dirt in and make it look at least somewhat better. So that's something we would handle internally. So here's a drone shot facing east. Shows little bigger picture of that inconsistency in the grass, the, the dead spots. Some of this light green, I believe is that Bermuda grass growing. And I, I believe this is all on a sprinkler system too.
I'm sure it is.
This is the east end of the park.
Yep.
And so same here, when you, when you cross Main Street and get over onto the west side, kind of right when you hit this path, you notice a lot of those dead spots, inconsistencies in the grass. Same deal over here. And then one major issue, which may require some internal, the addition of some sprinkler systems and potentially some more dirt brought in, but we're definitely hoping to get something done on this before the winter and any further erosion is caused here on top of the storm shelters. So we're trying to find a solution for this in this program also. So in order to kind of get the best deal, we, we considered bids from numerous companies, all specialize in grass, grass management, planning, fertilization. So this will be the first step in what we're calling a grass management plan at Linear Park. Since Means Park is such a small area, I believe we threw, we kind of are throwing that in there with it, where grass is treated for and cared for on a more regular basis. So there's five total zones that Brooke and some of his guys mapped out for us and four in Linear and one in Means. These will all be added to the grass management plant. The cost of watering, obviously with sprinklers and keeping the grass mode is, is quite a bit every year. We're kind of, city staff is kind of seeing this as the third part of that thing. We, we water the grass, we mow it. It's, it's time to probably fertilize it, take a little bit better care of it. City staff believes the best benefit for the grass and cost efficient use of water would come through regular overseeding, aerating, treatment and fertilization of the park grass. And then internally making sure the sprinkler systems are operating well and evenly. And then, you know, keeping dirt in there, making sure there's not rock buildup or anything else. So city staff, out of all the bids, is going to recommend the best bidder through TrueGreen. They can do a lot smaller treatments more frequently. They were by far the most affordable. They can come out on a regular basis. They have quite a staff and treatments can be added or removed and also rolled over. So here's kind of that map of those five zones we were referring to. I don't believe Means is actually showed in here.
Yeah, it's down there.
Oh, it is? Okay.
The green one, so.
Oh, my bad. There it is. So the east to west, right here.
So what type of grass we're going to oversee, Bermuda or fescue?
Fescue.
Fescue we were going to oversee and that was according to the TrueGreen, that was what you want to oversee in the fall. They said actually Bermuda.
Yeah, he said Bermuda, you actually generally don't seed for Bermuda. It was kind of interesting. You just kind of sometimes consult it and let it come in and take over. Because that's something we did address with. TrueGreen was really good. They were real flexible with when they were going to be able to do our treatments. And as you'll notice here, we've got the, the five different zones here. And we really wanted to focus on, obviously, the blue zone and the yellow zone first because those are our busiest parts of Linear. And then Means will be relatively easy because we've got a pretty solid stand of fescue there. So we do not want to be good out and let it get behind on it. As we go west, we have more sparse watering, so that's going to play into effect on how they treat it and what we're going to do. But it will definitely make the grass look better, get rid of some of those weeds. And as Thatcher said, we put a lot of money into mowing, we put a lot of money into watering, let's put a little money in to make it look pretty.
Yeah. So I, I think from the discussions with TrueGreen, he was just saying you, you want to kind of get that fescue growing where you can and where you have the most water coverage and get it overseeded and then you can come back. And if the fescue's not living very well, that's kind of where you add in the Bermuda.
But he did not recommend seeding Bermuda. He always said, basically said he's never seen it seeded. That's just what he told me. I can't voucher that or not, I don't know. But that's what the TrueGreen does.
Well, I mean, we never, never let the grass mature enough to get seeded, so you have to overseed it to.
And I think.
Let it die off.
You know, and I think I've got an idea. I'll talk to Thatcher on top of the storm shelter to maybe go and keep some grass on top of that.
I mean, I think with the water, we're getting to it. I mean, you know, that fescue is obviously that thick green grass that you're, that you're seeing everywhere, that you see down at Means Park. I mean.
I think if we've seeded and we, we fertilize it and we control with our water coverage, I think we'll be able to get a good stand.
So just again, TrueGreen has provided an extensive multi-year plan to get, to get grass good and into good shape. They provided vast information and on the watering plan and will monitor progress throughout the winter and early spring. Other bidders were quite a bit more costly for quite a bit less service. One key thing that we liked, any planned services that are not used can be rolled over into later months or into the next year. And I believe even if we, if we paid for fertilization and we didn't use it, we could, we could use it for aeration, maybe in the spring or something like that. So they're pretty flexible on, on, and they're gonna, they're not going to do something that we don't need. They're going to work with us and make sure we're doing what we need and, and being cost effective. So this fall, the grass would be overseeded and watered extensively to improve thickness, consistency and eliminate some of those patches we've seen. Next spring, staff would come back and present a further plan for weed mitigation, aeration, fertilization and anything else for kind of the rapid growth of that grass in the springtime. Public works staff, Brooke's going to internally work on addressing the lacking sprinkler coverage either way. So here's just another breakdown of that plan. Overseeding, aeration in the fall, strategic watering, fertilization, aerate that grass, grow strong, consistent grass. And then after we've got a good base going, focus on some of that weed mitigation. Future plans, come back and aerate again in the spring, fertilization again in the spring and summer. And then TrueGreen will also assess that watering and sprinkled, sprinkler coverage late spring in '22. And then kind of just getting in a cycle where we repeat this process. And I believe Matt even considered adding it as a budget item in 2023. So I'm happy to take any other comments, questions?
I like the motion to approve that $8,210 be allocated to the general fund that parks and recreation, foster and repair and maintenance grounds, 10-320-6145.
Motion by Sarah.
Hold on a second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. So as we've discussed a couple of times, in order to approve the budget at our, maintain our middle levy from last year, we have to have two, we have to hold two public hearings. This first one is the revenue neutral rate public hearing to talk about the legislation there. And so what we need to do is the mayor will open the revenue neutral rate public hearing to receive public comment and then close the hearing. And then we will need a voice vote to adopt the ordinance to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Okay, so I open the revenue neutral rate public hearing?
If there's any member of the public, you have three minutes to address the council. Mayor, can you close the hearing now?
Okay, we've closed the hearing.
And we need a voice vote to the city council to adopt the resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2022-23 annual budget.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to exceed revenue neutral rate for the 2022-2023 annual budget.
Actually, let's back up. Let's go to waive the reading of the ordinance first.
Waive the reading of the resolution?
Oh, wait, you said resolution or orders?
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Okay, nevermind.
If I said orders, I apologize. I was.
Okay. If it's a resolution, we don't need to do that. So, Sarah.
Sarah? Can I ask a question? This just keeps our middle levy where it is? Is that what this is doing?
Yes, it keeps the middle levy where it was last year.
Motion by Sarah, second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Motion passed.
I believe that's Resolution 2137.
Thank you.
And there's two copies for you and him to sign. All right. Now we'll conduct the public hearing for the informal adoption of the annual budget. Like we said earlier, this proposed budget recommends a property tax middle levy of 33.226 mils. One mil equals $51,169 for a total levy of $1,732,000. And that's for the general fund, the library board and one mil for our bond and interest fund, the debt service fund. Homeowner, a homeowner of a $200,000 home in Goddard will pay $764, $764.20 in city property tax. Their total bill will be larger, but the city portion will be $764.20. This is just a graphic showing our assessed valuation, which is the blue columns versus our mil levy, which is red. You see the red stayed flat since 2018. Our assessed valuation, on the other hand, has grown. There's been another very large growth this year. And I believe that has not only to do with our additional homes that we've added, but also our commercial valuation's increase as well. Just break down here the budget revenue versus expenditure. And again, remember, revenue, these are estimates for what we plan to spend. Revenue, expenditure side, that not only includes what we plan to spend, but it also, we built in some additional, additional expenses there that we, that we're not necessarily planning to spend, but we will have sufficient carryover fund balances to cover them if we do. For instance, there's about, I believe it's about a $6.5 million line item in the debt service fund budget that is specifically for, to cover the accounting for if we were to retire temporary debt and issue, issue permanent financing. So, you know, we, every time we do a residential development, we do these temp notes. And in order to retire those temp notes and then issue, you know, permanent finance, we need to be able to have the budget authority to spend that money to pay those off. And again, so we have to have a revenue in there for six and a half million and expenditure in there for six and a half million. Now, I don't think we're retiring any temp notes next year, but we have that in there year to year, just in case we need to be able to do that. It's not obligating us to spend money. This is in the federal government, but it's giving us the authority to do so if we need to do it. Like for instance, if those, if those temp notes were to come due early, we would be able to legally be able to pay them off. And this is just a breakdown of the overall budget for all of our funds. First call here is general fund, the debt service fund, the bond and interest fund there. See, there's that $6 million in receiving of bond proceeds. And then down here on this side, we have, we call it within that fund specifically, the cash basis reserve, but it's, but under here it shows cap law discretionary, but it's the same thing. Just cap law discretionary is what we usually have for the general fund and cash basis reserve is what we call it for the debt service fund. Here is property tax supported special revenue funds. That's basically the library's three mils. Non-property tax supported funds, this includes the street fund, the tourism promotion fund, Tanganicas fund for their CID tax. And then enterprise here, enterprise funds here on the far end, this is water and sewer fund combined. This is the budget summary. This is the notice that we published to have this hearing today. You can see here the 33.226 mil that we're levying with this budget matches the actual mil levy from last year's budget. And this is the budget certificate that we'll, I'll have you sign after the budget's passed. But anyway, we'll have the mayor open the public hearing, accept review of public comments, close the public hearing, and then voice vote to approve the annual budget.
Okay. Open the public hearing?
If there's any members of the public that would like to speak about the 2022-23 annual budget?
Oh, my. Okay.
We gotta take her.
We gotta take her.
Jim Olegin, 1217, Whitley H Drive. And I think the budget's great. I'm glad we're spending money to keep our community going.
Thank you, Jim.
First time in 10 budget, 11 budgets, excuse me, I've had somebody speak. Thank you very much. It's the biggest day of my career you've been on.
Jim, can you tweet about that? Put it out there.
Okay. Say no one else. We close the public hearing.
And then we need a motion to approve the 2022 annual budget.
Make a motion to adopt the 2022-23 operating budget.
Motion by Sarah, second, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
There's this budget certificate.
So honorable governing body, there's no city administrative report tonight, but just to make you aware of some upcoming notable agenda items. So we'll have detached garage consideration ordinance that was discussed in the planning commission meeting, the standard traffic ordinance and uniform public Prince Code adoption, consider partnership with Sedge County on police department equipment, and then consider a rezoning request by a private citizen.
Records management system.
Governing body comments? Larry?
The well situation's coming.
Doing well. Doing well. All four wells are up running. We got seven going late, mid last week. It's pumping right now 464 gallons a minute and everything seems fine so far. Can let it run for about another week and we'll shut five off, but let it rest since we have a cap pumping pump out of that.
Maximum we can put out?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is that the maximum we can put out?
Well, we have a, we, we have not really a maximum we can pump per minute, but we have a maximum that we can pump on wells four and five per year because those rights were perfected. It kind of snuck up on us that they were perfected. And I just today received information back from an open records request I made with the state department of Ag for all that documentation. Haven't had a chance to go through it all, but we do have to watch our consumption, how much we pump on four and five.
The problem with the new project, getting the bigger perfection to drop our.
We're in the, I think, I think we just recently applied for an extension on, in our perfection period on, on this overriding water right that's over several wells.
On four and, on seven and eight, we just recently, at the end of 2019, we applied for another five year window for perfection of that. And the fact that four and five were perfected kind of snuck up on Brian and I. We didn't realize that. And sometime in 19, that happened. Looking through all of our documentation, we couldn't find any paperwork. That's why I did the open records request with department of Ag. Now, there are some, some avenues we can take that if we decide we want to increase those perfection amounts that we can, talk to the state and put in the proper paperwork and do that. And we'll watch that. Something that gave me a little comfort is that we ran all summer on two wells, half of our, half of our production capacity. And they were running long hours, but we were able to provide adequate water, which is good. So now when we have all four running and everything's running tip top, it gives me a little more comfort that we can provide quite a bit of water to the city.
Yeah, but I think we want to get our, our ref, our ability to pump more up into the growing. We don't want to cap all four wells off of perfection.
No, and, and I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Brooke, but I, I think we, last year we reported that we pumped around 200, maybe 210 million gallon.
Right, right just under 210.
And our water rights now are 320 million. That's what we're working on perfecting is right now, up to 320 million. So we've got a, what, I don't know what that would be percentage wise, we've probably got 20 to 30% cushion there to, to, to pump more, to grow in our water production.
And the wells, the wells seem like they will handle the production. Of course, if we're, if we grow a lot and we're running our motors longer and all of our equipment longer, we'll, we'll have to deal with that. That will, you know, more maintenance costs. But it did give me some comfort, we could provide water with the growth we have.
And, and just on the other thing, you might, on those, on those water, and I, and I thought we were going to maybe get on a conference call at some point, weren't we, to have them explain this overriding permit that we're in perfection period right now? Because we were thinking that we. Because we were thinking that we had up to, uh, I can't remember the number now.
Well, we thought we had 80 million per well.
80 million per well, but we were told, we're being told something different, I guess.
55 million per well on four and five, which is, I think we can get those increased. I was waiting for this open records, this paperwork to come back, Carlin, I'll sit down, but Brian will decide what direction we're taking.
And and then I think, I think in answer to your first comment about 464, aren't we permitted, is it 500?
500.
Per gallon per minute? That's our rate that we're allowed to pump those.
And we have to watch that because in five, we'll run 630 gallons per minute all day long through that. So that's one reason why we've been installing is we've been working on these, put VFDs in and we can draw that pump down. It does two things, it starts the pump slower so there's not a hit when that motor hits it on all the hardware in that column and in that pump. And then the second, we can slow that pump down to run at 500 gallons per minute, or above, below, whatever, which chooses that, uses controller.
So is it the new submersibles that are able to do that or?
Yeah, the new, the submersible in, in seven right now is doing 465 per minute, which is, we're pretty happy with that.
So we're, we're using right now about 62.5% of our water volume right that we, that we have under perfection right now.
Pushing two wells pretty hard all summer.
To try and get.
So, so what's your recommendation on keeping from running into a jam in the future?
Well, uh, obviously to distribute that around, keeping all, you know, you, you want to rotate that production around all four wells, obviously. But then, you know, as we start getting a little closer, you know, if we were getting 80, 85%, we ought to start looking for more water rights, obviously, after that. So, or, or act, or uh, request more water volume on these existing wells that we have, which we, which we can. And the nice thing about municipalities is that, you know, Division Water Resource, they, they know, you know, we're, we're, we're not just pumping water to irrigate corn for, you know, a private individual use. We're, we're supporting a population of what, 6,000? I don't know what to say. Yeah, 6,000. So I mean, we can get extensions on these, even, even if we don't perfect 320 million gallon, gallon, they, they are likely to give us an extension again to, to continue to perfect that uh, over a period of time.
So I just don't want anybody to infringe on our water rights just because we're not using it at this time.
Right, right. I, I think, I think we can, uh, we plan to have kind of a, uh, an educational session with uh, Lane Laterno, who is the head of the water right permitting process that, the DWR and Department of Agriculture, to, to find out, okay, what's our best way to make sure we maintain the rights we have and expand on the rights, you know, expand our, our ability to perfect even more for the city.
I guess to stay at the, stay ahead of the curve instead of behind it.
Yep, yep, for sure.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Larry. Sarah?
I just want to say thanks to Matt for managing our budget so well and keeping our mill levy level and not having, you know, putting us in a position where we need to increase it or especially with how we were able to lower the water bills and all of that and try and make things, the cost of living affordable for our citizens.
Yeah, I'm just glad it's finally over. Usually we're done, usually we're done before the 4th of July and here it is.
Yeah.
Football season and I'm still dealing with budget.
We still don't have that old Chicago to go get a drink.
Have to get that bottle out of my ass, I mean.
Michael?
Well, I'm just excited. We had some, some public engagement in the, in the lobbying process. Thanks, Mr. Milligan. You're welcome. You know, a lot, a lot of other citizens can learn a lot from you just showing up and being engaged. So, but yeah, thanks and thanks for all the best work.
Um, I have one question for Mike. I know that the, we called Dr. Brian about two weeks ago about Goddard Destination Development's grass. Have we sent out them any letters as far as?
Yeah, so you probably, you probably noticed they got mowed on, on the southern half recently. I don't know, I'm sorry, it'd be on the western half of it basically, but we, um, we don't. Yeah, and they're going to hit the, they're going to hit the north side too. So we hired a contractor to go do all that. Yeah, so we, we, we got some bids and um, we got an amazing bid from one company called Wolf Mowing, Commercial Mowing, and they were able to bid it substantially low to go basically, um, I think in terms of brush hogging, I'm not sure if that's correct, brush hogging it, but they basically took a, they pulled a, a big brush hog behind it and they were able to pick 60 acres of that whole lot and so, and they're going to be on the north side as well. And um, we're going to bill them, uh, they're, we're going to pay them, of course, and then we're going to get reimbursed by sending it over to the Genesis for reimbursing it. Okay. No, we don't, I can, just, thank you for all of this. Absolutely, yeah. We're, uh, we're assisting them in the, in the management of their property.
Okay, well, thanks for everybody. Thank you, Jim, for coming in. I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.